I'm one of the divisions to try and work out the state, see how other counties can conduct their business. And I, we heard Berkeley County always with a sense of how lucky I am to be able to serve this county. We have a commission or council.
We're hoping that'll be changed in legislation.
Well, it's, we have a, we have a wonderful facility, one of the facilities, very cooperative relationships with our council. And, you know, if anything is needed, we need after, whether we can, reasonable prevail, and we'll be behind the court. This, that is not always the case here. Very grateful for our good relationships with the county council. And I hope that will continue that way.
Yes, sir.
So, I will solicit that from the council nominations for president.
Your honor, I would like to place a nomination, the name James Whitaker, for president of the Berkeley County Council.
Second motion.
Second. Is there any further nominations? And then call for the vote. There being no nominations, all the questions.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mr. Whitaker as president, two to five seconds.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will recognize James Whitaker as president of Berkeley County Council.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a nomination for vice president.
Yes, your honor, I would like to nominate Councilman Eddie Goken as vice president.
I'll second that.
You have seconded, councilman. Excuse me. Any further nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed.
Motion to be closed, any second.
Sir.
All right. Who gets the honor of being recorded in minutes is second, Mr. Whitaker.
Oh, as far, yeah.
Yeah, James Whitaker, we do have a second. And if there's someone who wants to call a question, yes, second.
Recall the question. All those in favor say aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing all in favor, none opposed, we recognize Mr. Edward Gokenauer as the vice president. Okay. Actually, I'll, you know what, I would have the clerk inscribe, you can see, I'll have the clerk to prescribe the names of the oath forms. And by the way, the oath is as prescribed by our founding fathers, eighteen seventy-two constitution, the first constitution of eighteen sixty-three, of course, first rewritten. And the oath is from section, article five, on section four of that. And it is, it is very simple, but I can, I can do it by heart, Mr. President Whitaker.
Would you like me to come down?
No, I, I do fine here. Do you swear or affirm?
I do swear and affirm.
All right. I, James Whitaker.
Aye, James Whitaker.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will defend the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
That I will defend the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the office of president of the Berkeley County Council.
That I will faithfully discharge the office of president of the county council.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Gokenauer, I swear.
I swear.
I, Edward Gokenauer.
I, Edward Gokenauer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully defend the Constitution of this United States.
That I will faithfully defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And defend the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Berkeley County Council.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the vice president of the Berkeley County Council.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We have a written oath to be reported by the clerk. And that's the president, and the vice president. And if you will sign, I will attest to your signature. Oh, is it, we, oh, James, yeah. Welcome to my world.
Okay.
Ceremonial pin.
There you go. I'll be right back, David. There you go. All right, now log these with the clerk.
Really appreciate it, Judge, for your time.
Mr. President, may I turn over the amended proceedings to you.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to.
May I have your lead to return to regular business.
Yes, indeed, sir. Very much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before we actually officially start the meeting, we have a, usually prayer, prayer and pledge. And today we have Mr. Terry Major of Church of Martinsburg to come and. Good morning, everyone. I call this meeting to order. It is my distinct honor to be here today and to assume this position from our former president, Doug Copen-Haver, who I think we all should commend and applaud him for the, for the leadership he gave us to this county for the many years. I also like to welcome our two newest members, H.D. Boyd and Steve Catlett, to this commission or council. Soon we'll get to the commission. I'm hoping that's what legislation will do for us this year. And so the first order of business is, do we have any items from the public that would like to come and speak? If not, then we'll move on to the consent agenda and the purchase order log.
Approve or disapprove.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to approve the agenda.
Yeah, we'll.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log. Any questions for Tracy? Tracy, you're good today. Let's see, internal budget revisions, there aren't any this week?
There's certainly not.
And no changes in status?
No, sir.
That's wonderful. Approval of the amendments for December twenty-second council meeting, everyone was present. Let's see, the council calendars.
Mr. President, only four of the council was present, was present, so you should probably pull those out, since Mr. Catlett is not.
Good. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes.
December twenty-second?
December twenty-second is presented.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, and one abstention due to absence, would I be correct?
Abstain.
Okay. Abstain. All right, boarding commissions, calendars. We will be here, of course, today. It says December, we're in January, aren't we?
Sure.
Already. Get back to the right one. Today at January the fifth, and we'll be here next Thursday on the twelfth, and we'll be observing Martin Luther King Day on the sixteenth. Monday will be closed. Then on Monday the ninth, we have LEPC, Water District Airport Authority, Farmland Protection. The tenth is two P.M., Central Dispatch, five P.M., Stormwater, six P.M., Sewer District. On the eleventh, Development Authority, at nine thirty, six thirty P.M., or nine thirty A.M., six thirty P.M., was Roundhouse Authority. And on the twelfth, six thirty Fire Board. And let's see, we got here, let me check here. And council calendars and board of commission calendars. Is there any vacancies or appointments that we need to do there? Anybody?
Set, set.
Okay. Oh, I haven't passed that. I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Correction of assessment logs or reportment, nothing is provided by the assessor's office, we can move on there. And nothing for the board of application, or new board applications or anything?
No, sir, Mr. President, but I would like to request that Ronald Tru... No, sir, Mr. President, but I would like to request that Ronald Truitt be placed on the planning.
Commission?
Commission.
Okay, we have a motion for that? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries, we'll notify Mr. Truitt, he needs to be sworn in at the clerk's office, thank you. Board of Meeting Reports. Mr. Boyd.
Nothing to report yet this month.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart.
I thought I had a telemark meeting yesterday, but evidently that was mistaken, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Gokunower.
Yes, sir, had planning commission meeting on Monday night.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, thank you. And had very light, very light agenda. Ms. Barnhart, Linda Barnhart, was nominated and voted on as president once again, and Tim Lewis is the new Vice President, again, to be fulfilling that role again. So we're very appreciative for their willingness to.
Well, Mr. Catlett, I don't know if you've attended any boards or meetings yet, but I'll, I'll give you the floor.
Hopefully we get that opportunity this month.
Yes, indeed, we will be more than happy to provide you with some boards. That being said, we already filled the vacancies, and we're going to the honorary council person. Mr. Gokunower, would you do the honors?
Sure.
Come on up here.
Aye.
Aye. I'm on table.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
Fulfill the responsibilities.
Fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Councilman.
Of the Office of Honorary Councilman.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So there you go.
So.
Where you go to school and what you're involved in, and what's your future made of life?
I'm going to Martinsburg South Federal School. Very interested in science right now, maybe going into medical school, probably be one of my interests in going through science classes through the school. I'm also interested in architecture, and I enjoy school and reading, math.
Wonderful.
And I enjoy sports as well.
Okay. Any particular sport?
I enjoy running across country.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get pictures here when we take a break and get that put out on our.
He's got some wonderful grandparents, says he, we have known for a long time.
Is that right? I think, I think they look kind of proud to be here, so, wonderful. Okay. Fiduciary, we have nothing, oh, there he is, you're sitting in the wrong spot, I didn't see you there. Will Lawrenceon with fiduciary, the estate accounts for the month of January, twenty-four states, is that still correct?
That is correct, counsel. Good morning. Today I present the twenty-four states proposing to settle in this jurisdiction for the month of January twenty-twenty-three. The list of said twenty-four states is identical to that found in your read ahead. As prescribed by West Virginia law, my office has published these states in the Martinsburg Journal Newspaper on December fifth, twenty-twenty-two, or before they're in, placing the region on public legal notice of these estates pending settlement status. Furthermore, all interested parties have been individually noticed either via signing an affidavit and waiver of final settlement, or by receiving a copy of the proposed final accounting of probate assets. With all these notices legally and actually performed, no objections to any of these estates settlements have been formally submitted to my office. Without any objections to any interested party here present in the audience, I ask this council to consider approving these twenty-four states as listed in your read ahead proposal.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with those read ahead of the estate settlement? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to accept the, the names that the fiduciary council has presented to us.
Okay. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A quick estate hearing that no one is coming to.
No one's coming?
No.
It's okay for the council to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
If council will permit me, I do have a petition to copy, to probate a copy of a will in solemn form for your consideration. On September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, Ms. Burley Lee Hartman passed away, a resident of Berkeley County, West Virginia. In November of that same year, Ms. Karen Shank, the petitioner and daughter of the decedent, presented my office with a copy of Ms. Hartman's last will and testament. As this council knows, only legally valid original wills are permitted into probate unless this council permits it. On December first, twenty-twenty-two, hearing notices were sent to all who take under this will, and as well as those who, interested parties whom do not take under the will. The will does actually take away, or it changes what would have been in testate succession. Multiple children who are not local are written out of the will. To date, my office has received no responses from any party indicating contentiousness regarding this copy of the will being allowed for probate. It is also believed by this office this is going to be a very small estate with a closing of a bank account, and I believe a sale of land worth less, on at least appraised value, less than ten thousand dollars. Again, without any interested parties present wishing to object, I ask for this council's consideration in allowing the copy of Ms. Hartman's will to be probated in solemn form.
Okay, you've heard the description of what we need to do here, do I have a motion to accept the will of Karen, I'm sorry, of the estate of Burley Lee Hartman, to accept the will in solemn form?
So moved.
And we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Number two?
Thank you, counsel.
Do I need a stack of pins, since I'm starting to do all this?
I, I don't think so.
Okay. I think we're a little bit more efficient than the House right now, so.
The bar hasn't been separated.
That's, yeah. Very good point. Thank you, counsel, that's all I have.
Indeed, thank you. All right, it says we can take a break, but, well, actually, I kind of skip past the break. We, how about we just go ahead and do the approval of the meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-three?
Yes, sir, in your packet, as we do for every first meeting of the calendar year, is your proposed meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-three. You'll notice that we did highlight the holidays, if you've already approved in red. The only exception to that, and we discussed this a month or so ago, when you approved twenty-twenty-three holidays, the holiday schedule does not reflect Juneteenth. You'll see that West Virginia Day is Tuesday, June the twentieth. Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday, is Monday, June the nineteenth. There seems to be some confusion in Charleston as to whether they will recognize Juneteenth this year. The West Virginia, the calendar for the, for West Virginia personnel proper does not list Juneteenth as a holiday. The holiday, the, the holiday schedule for the court system does list Juneteenth as a holiday. If you'll remember last year, we got notification that Juneteenth would be a holiday, we adopted it. Early in the, in calendar twenty-twenty year, they revised the calendar and they removed Juneteenth, and then a week before Juneteenth, the governor declared Juneteenth a holiday. I don't know. As it stands now, Juneteenth is not listed, but if there are any formal changes from the governor's office, we'll let you know.
He seems to do that.
Pardon me, sir?
He seems to do that.
Yes, he does.
When the week appropriates it.
And, and the employees appreciate it. Just, just a couple things of note. Just a reminder that January twenty-sixth, which is a normal meeting, Thursday meeting, you have two public hearings scheduled that day, and it is on your, on your council calendars, and it's for the nuisance property nuisance ordinance. The first public hearing is at eleven o'clock, and then we'll have an evening public hearing at six o'clock, and I know some of you have been getting some, some calls about the proposed ordinance. Also, as this council is aware, we actually start budget hearings next week, Penny? The deadline for outside agencies budget, fiscal year twenty-four budgets request is close of business tomorrow, and internal departments is to close of business on the thirteenth. So we are scheduling those budget hearings now. West Virginia Code eleven dash three dash twenty-four states that the county council shall annually, not later than February first of the tax year, meet as the Board of Equalization and Review for the purpose of reviewing and equalizing the assessment made by the assessor. The board shall not adjourn for any longer than three business days at a time, not including Saturday, Sunday, or legal holiday until the work is complete. The board may adjourn, sign, e, die, anytime after February fifteenth of the tax year, and shall, shall adjourn, sign, e, die, no later than the last day of February of the tax year. You can see in your calendar, your proposed calendar, that your first day as the Board of Equalization and Review will be Tuesday, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. That meeting typically starts at two o'clock, and then for at least the next three weeks through Thursday, February sixteenth, you will be meeting every Tuesday and Thursday. And if you'll recall, last year we had no tax appeals, but so you're not sitting here for two hours in the afternoon, we will schedule budget hearings and a lot adequate time in between the budget hearings, so that if there are any tax appeals, you'll, you'll do that. On January thirty-first, I'm sorry, yes, on January thirty-first, the assessor will present the books. Again, if you remember last year, we set the tables up and the books couldn't be presented because they were not provided by the State of West Virginia. Hopefully that problem has been resolved. So, long story short, starting next week, you'll be up to your elbows in budget requests. We typically try to have all the budget hearings done by early March. We will schedule at least two workshops, we were actually able to do it in one day last year, and then, of course, then we'll present it to the elected head, the elected department, the elected officials in the department heads. We hope to have the council adopt the budget no later than March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, but we do have until March third against twenty-twenty-three to get our levy document into the state audit results, and we like to have that extra two weeks in case there's, gives ourselves a little buffer in case we run behind, in case there's some glitches. So, other than that, the, the, your budget proposed calendar for the, calendar twenty-three is pretty, pretty standard.
There's one little typo there, the April twentieth should be a Thursday, not a Tuesday.
I'm sorry, what, what was that?
April twentieth should be a Thursday. We will correct that.
Okay. Oh, on the.
On the calendar.
Yeah.
Actually, April twentieth. Yeah, that, that should, we have to lay the levies the third Tuesday in April, so probably the date is wrong. We'll have to correct that date, but that's the date that we lay the levy, so Tuesday will be right, the date probably is, is wrong. Sounds to me, Penny, like we need to add. Okay.
Yeah, Tuesday the eighteenth.
If you could adopt the budget.
With that admission.
Or the schedule with those revisions.
Okay, you've heard the, the request, do I have a motion to accept with the revisions?
Yes, sir, motion to accept the twenty-twenty-three meeting schedule as presented with the modified changes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Is there a second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Okay. Next item of business.
Committee assignments.
Committee assignments, it's kind of a little bit of a housekeeping thing here.
It's in your packet, in your read ahead, on your tablet, but I've also provided it to you in a spreadsheet, primarily from Mr. Barnhart, so he can read it. You'll see that all the board and committees are listed with the twenty-twenty-two council members that were assigned to those boards indicated, and then as part of your normal business, you can decide as a body who, what council members will be on those board and committees for twenty-twenty-three.
All righty. Might do something just a little bit different here this year. Not a whole lot of changes here. I was going to assume the, since Mr. Copenhever had the, the Fire Board and Ambulance Authority, he was going to split the Fire Board and the Ambulance Authority between me and Mr. Catlett, if that's okay? I'll do the Fire Board if you would do the Ambulance Authority.
Sure.
And then I'll continue to serve on the Airport Authority and the Transit Authority. H.D., would you be willing to till, still accept the Roundhouse Senior Services, CVB Landmarks and Home Consortium, let's.
Also Main Street.
And Main Street.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Okay, we'll get these all printed out for you.
Okay.
Okay. And Steve, we were going to, like I said, do the Ambulance Authority, Farmland Preservation, Sewer and Stormwater, Library Board and Region Seven Workforce?
Senior.
What are you at, Jim?
Senior Services.
Senior Services.
No, you're not, only Steve.
I'm going to take Health Board, Water District, Region Nine, Extension Service, MPO, who I need a partner, Solid Waste and Telo.
Okay.
Steve is going to do MPO.
MPO?
Is that right?
Yes. Okay.
And Senior Services as well? I think.
You want to see your services?
I thought.
Yep.
That'd be good with me, yeah.
Mr. Gokunower?
Since I'm a senior, H.D.
You know what? Don't mind, thank you.
All righty, and Mr. Gokunower, we'll have you with the nine-one-one advisory. Development Authority will be continuing to serve there, Parks and Rec, Planning Commission, which I think they would like to have, to have happen, and LEPC, it's quarterly, and the Better Controls Quarterly and Criminal Justice, yes.
What about the Museum Commission? I'm not sure.
Well, we haven't, it's not set up yet, but I want to put that on here, just to make sure that it's in, it's in your mindset for when it all gets established, we can.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was established yet.
I would be interested, I've already attended several of the first few meetings that were sort of unofficial with the state officials.
Uh-huh.
So if it comes available, I wouldn't mind taking that.
Okay. All righty. That's all right, do we, do we need a motion to confirm all those, or just a consensus?
But, but you did it a little differently this year. What I'd like to do is take your list, if you could give it to Penny.
Yeah, and we'll put them on the spreadsheet.
She can document it in an email, and we'll send it out to everyone, and you can confirm that, that we have it right.
Right, yeah.
And then we'll send letters to each one of the agencies.
Agencies.
Letting them know who the council representative was.
Figure that might be a little bit easier, I'll, I'll do the massive point, is that okay? Sorry, Penny, I didn't mean to lose you.
That's okay.
I'm new at this.
That's okay.
This is, this is only the start of, well, this is only the start of my thirteenth year, so I'm still kind of new at this. All right.
The last thing on your list, the.
The last thing on your list, the last minor housekeeping matter is the W R N R radio appearance list. If the council will recall, prior to calendar twenty twenty-two, we actually had time slots on W E P M and W R N R and then W E P M stopped those in late twenty twenty-one. So the only radio spots that are routinely assigned to the county is W R N R. We always give the council absolutely the first right of refusal. As the year progresses, if anything of interest comes up, a lot of times W R N R will reach out to individual council members and ask you to come in and talk about, could be the nuisance control ordinance, it could be budgets, it could be any number of things.
These, yeah, these are all on Tuesday mornings.
These are all Tuesday mornings. If we can't fill all the slots that are on that, what we typically do is once we get to that spot, if we don't have anyone, we'll throw it out onto the floor, see if anybody, any of the council wants that spot. If you don't, then I usually have the department take it. You know, Little Lawrenson has gone on and talked about, you know, wills and estates and things like that. So if you could sign up for the radio spots for this calendar year, I would appreciate it.
I took the first one this year coming up at January the seventeenth, so, and then the one right before the air show announcement, so.
And if we do have access to your calendars, Penny has access to your calendars, we'll make sure that it's put on your calendar.
All right, we'll get that passed around here pretty quick.
My schedule is usually pretty flexible.
We're all good. We're all good. Go ahead.
If everybody just take a couple, then, you know, we may end up having to take an extra one somewhere along the line. We'll get them covered. It's always good to be on there, they're always.
Yeah, it's a great show.
It's a fun spot.
And they're very fair, they know a lot of the issues, they're involved in the issues, so it's nice to be able to put that out into the public.
And I gotta be honest, every now and then when Matt's on there and we start talking about sports, I kind of get a little bit lost, I don't keep up on the way they. When he starts talking all that stuff, I'm usually very quiet. Yeah. Bill Stubblefield was on there one day and they were talking about being able to have sponsorships to college athletes and for them to receive money. And I went, hey, you're asking the wrong person. So. But that being said, let's, we're gonna take a break and get a picture with our honorary councilperson and we'll come right back here in session.
Okay, we're back in session and there's an item here on the agenda for the TIF discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Some of you may be aware some time ago, and I guess it's been two years ago, actually October 2021, representatives from the city of Martinsburg, it was the city manager, Andy Blake, myself, I think council president, Hope Behaver, and some others, we met with John Stumpf, John is a lawyer with Steptoe &amp; Johnson, is kind of the state, the western U.S. state expert on tips. At that time, if you remember, there was a lot of discussion about developing and extending Harold Drive between Taylor Station and Martinsburg Commons. For a number of reasons, we decided not to pursue it. And there's only one TIF district in the entire county right now, and it's just a little trade off to the west of Raleigh Street extended.
Yeah, Cleveland and Millbrook.
Yes, yeah, that area. But tips can be used for purposes of economic development. And, you know, we continue to think about ways, particularly that area between Taylor Station and the Commons, ways that we can get water and sewer out there, you know, ways that, you know, we can, and that, you know, I think everyone agreed that absolutely would be an asset to the Commons, but also to the people that use the Commons, if we could get a different entrance into there. So I had council vice president Gokenauer and I were talking, I guess, Eddie, like two or three weeks ago. And he suggested that maybe this council would like to have a workshop on tips, and what tips can do, how they can be used. We know that they can be used, and there's all kinds of tips. There's property tips, there's tips for sales tax. You know, we've got, the county has some, it's going to have some pressing needs in the next two or three years, primarily in the area of Public Safety. So it's time to kind of think outside the box to see whether there's ways that we can, as you know, we now have five fire stations that have OAS four twenty-four seven firefighters. We can't add six more firefighters to four stations with the budget that we have right now.
If we did, what would be that dollar amount?
Probably between four and six million dollars.
That's what I was just discussing with the council.
Baker Heights is the only station that we currently have twenty-four seven. They have nine firefighters.
And that was through a safer grant, basically?
That was through a safer grant, which is now ran out. So that's all, it's all on our ticket right now. And our budget was never set up, the general fund budget was never set up with the intent to pay for twenty-two paid firefighters.
Neither was the state park, too.
Right. So, you know, if we added six more firefighters to four stations, now we're going from twenty-two firefighters and we're adding twenty-four more firefighters to it. And we just, we can't do that. So my question to you is, over the next couple of months, as particularly as we'll be immersed in budget, do you want to have a workshop set up to have someone come in and talk about tips?
I didn't know there were several different kinds of tips.
There are different kinds of tips.
Is that road entirely in Berkeley County, or is any of it in the city of Martinsburg?
It's all in the county.
It's all in the county, yeah.
And the road for the first ninety percent from Taylor Station is residential?
It is.
And that only becomes commercial?
Traffic laws.
Right around the Commons, right? I mean, that's my impression, yes. I've never...
And, you know, there was discussions, I mean, where, right, I mean, it's not something that you will be able to do overnight if it was ever in, and at that, at that time, the development authority that was the one that was working on that program, we had two or three, the last time I saw, we had two or three different concepts of how to run the road. Do we, do we run it from Target straight back? There was one proposal, where do you run it off the access road from?
Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge, that road that kind of goes to the left as you go in, connect back that way. And then, of course, right of ways would have to be obtained. It's, it's going to be pretty luxurious.
I do know that recently, there was a new formed church that was given several acres of property up there off of that, right behind the Target. So I don't know how tips affect religious properties or anything like that. Can there be multiple tips in one district? Multiple types of tips?
You know, Eddie and I had that discussion, and we don't know. I've never been involved in a TIF, so it might be good just to have...
To talk and discuss.
Yeah, have a two-hour workshop and, you know, in addition to the council, Eddie suggested maybe we have water and sewer and city Martinsburg and...
Development authority.
That way, they're gonna, that's going to be the biggest factor right there, one of them, highway department.
Right.
Well, I'd say the only option to get a road bike other than a TIF would be the Department of Highways.
Right. When we met with the Department of Highways, and when we met with them, the thought was to halfway between, halfway down Harold Drive, was to put another interchange in off of eighty-one. And they said, well, they wouldn't be opposed to it as long as we paid for it.
Well, instead of lights all the way down.
I mean, you're talking basically, what, three miles of road there? From exit, no, four. Exit twelve, exit eight.
Yeah, that's four miles.
Well, you know, there's already a portion of it there, but it's nowhere near enough. I think that's a thirty-foot right of way through there, isn't it?
Be easier to put an exit ramp right behind Target, wouldn't it?
An exit ramp behind Target on eighty-one?
I think they wouldn't do it. It would have to be further down, it would have to be between Taylor Station and...
There's got to be a distance.
They would have, I was going to say, there had to be another bridge put across. And it would probably end up down there someplace close to Proctor and Gamble, and that would, would be fulfilling to, mostly to them, because, you know, once...
You couldn't do an exit only? I mean, that would leave a lot of traffic trying to get out of there. They'd go out to the interstate versus...
Well, then they would have to come back out then on Taylor Station, you know, get back out on the interstate. But if it was exit only, I don't know. That would be, it's an idea.
So they fought exit fourteen for years and saying they couldn't, it's too close to exit thirteen obviously, but I guess because of the hospital, they justified it because of hospital access, you know? I doubt they would justify it for something else other than that, maybe.
It would, I think that if it was only an exit only, it would, it would benefit one sole entity more than public entity. So I don't know that it would, you know, be viable.
And the other reason we're bringing it up right now is, you know, Eddie will tell you, the activity in the planning commission, probably the past, what, two or three months, has really started to subside, subside and level out.
Has had the water district.
Right.
It's gone to zero with the water district.
So there's that, there's that year lag in property taxes from the time new property comes on the books until it runs through the tax rolls. There's that year lag. So this year, next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, your revenue, and I've done some preliminary revenue projections, your revenue projections look pretty, pretty good. Of course, you know, we're going to see a decrease in the property transfer tax because that's the, that has an immediate effect when, when housing and real estate slows down. We know that, that more and more houses are becoming available. But the property taxes that, that this council gets next fiscal year is already on the books. It's fiscal year twenty-four, year twenty-five that you have to be concerned about. And one of the things I'm going to tell you early on next Thursday is as you build this budget, don't build it in a lot of recurring expenses that you don't think you can sustain the year after, because next year, next year will look good. It's the year after that I'm concerned about.
So even if we stay budget neutral, it's still going to be a concern?
If you stay, compared to this year, if you stay budget neutral, you're golden. But you've been doing this a long time.
It's never going to be budget neutral.
Well, and, and I have, I have seen it in the past.
Okay.
Um.
Good luck.
Some of you may, may be aware, um, some time ago, and I guess it's been two years ago, like actually October twenty twenty one, um, representatives from the city of Martinsburg, it was the city manager, Andy Blake, um, myself, I think council president, both the labor and some others, we met with John Stump, John is a lawyer, the Steptoe and Johnson is kind of the, the, the state, the Western Union state expert on, on TIPS. At, at that time, if you remember, there was a lot of discussion about, um, developing and extending Harold Drive between Taylor Station and Martinsburg Commons. For a, a number of reasons, um, we decided not, not to pursue it, and there's only one TIP district in the entire county right now, and it's just a little trade off to the west of, um, Raleigh Street extended.
Clean shoes and mobile.
Yes, yeah, the shool in that area. But TIPS can be used for purposes of economic development. And, you know, we continue to think about ways, particularly that area between Taylor Station and the Commons, ways that we can get water and sewer out there, um, you know, ways that, um, you know, we can, and, and that, you know, I think everyone agreed that absolutely would be, um, an asset to the Commons, but also to the people that use the Commons, if we could get a different entrance into there. So I, um, council, uh, vice president, uh, Gokenhour, and I were talking, I guess, to Eddie like two or three weeks ago. And he suggested that, um, maybe this council would like to have a workshop, uh, on TIPS. And what TIPS can do, how they can be used, um, we know that they can be used, and there's all kinds of tips. There's, there's property tips, there's, there's tips that, um, for sales tax. You know, we've got, the, the county has some, it's gonna have some pressing needs in the next two or three years, primarily in the area of Public Safety. So it's time to kind of think outside the box, um, to see whether there's ways that we can, a- as you know, we now have five fire stations that have OAS four twenty-four seven firefighters. We can't add six more firefighters to four stations with the budget that, that we have right now.
If we did, what would be that dollar amount?
Probably between four and six million dollars.
That's what I was just discussing with the honorary council.
Baker Heights, um, is the only station that we currently have twenty-four seven, and they have nine firefighters.
And that was through a safer grant, basically?
Through a safer grant, which is now running out. So that's all, it's all on our ticket right now. And our budget was never set up, the general fund budget was never set up with the intent of to pay for twenty-two paid firefighters.
Neither was a state park, could you?
Right, so, you know, if we added six more firefighters to four stations, now we're going from twenty-two firefighters and we're adding twenty-four more firefighters to it, and we just, we can't do it. So my question to you is, um, over the next couple of months, as particularly as we're, we'll be immersed in budget, do you want to have a workshop set up to have someone come in and talk about TIPS?
I didn't know there were several different kinds of TIPS.
There are different kinds of TIPS.
Um, is that road entirely in Berkeley County, or is any of the city Martinburg?
It's all in the county.
It's all in the county, yeah. And the road for the first ninety percent from Taylor Station is residential?
It is.
And that only becomes commercial?
Traffic laws.
Right around the Commons, right? I mean, that's my impression, yes.
And, and, you know, there was discussions, I mean, where we, right, I mean, it's not something that you will be able to do overnight if, if it was ever in, and at that, at that time, the development authority that was the one that was working on that program, we had two or three, the last time I saw, we had two or three different, um, concepts of how to run the road. Do we, do we run it from Target straight back? There was one, one proposal, where you run it off the, the access road from?
Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge, that road that kind of goes to the left as you go in, connect back that way. And then, of course, right of ways would have to be obtained, it's, it's gonna be pretty luxurious.
I do know that, uh, recently, uh, there was a new formed church that was given several acres of property up there off of that, right behind the, uh, the Target. So I don't know how TIPS affect religious properties or anything like that. Can there be multiple TIPS in one district, multiple types of TIPS?
I, you know, Eddie and I had that discussion, and we, we don't know. I've never been involved in a TIP, so it might be good just to have.
To talk and discuss.
Yeah, have a two-hour workshop and, you know, in addition to the council, Eddie suggested maybe we have water and sewer and City Martinsburg and.
Development Authority.
Highway, they're gonna, that's gonna be the biggest factor right there, one of them, highway department.
Right.
Well, I'd say the only option to get a road like that other than a TIP would be the Department of Highways.
Right, well, we met with Department of Highways, um, and, and when we met with them, the thought was to halfway between, halfway down, um, Harold Drive, was to put another interchange in off of eighty-one. And they said, well, they wouldn't be opposed to it as long as we paid for it.
Well, instead of lights all the way down.
I mean, you're talking basically, what, three miles of road there? From exit, no, four, exit twelve to exit eight.
Yeah, that's four miles.
Well, you know, there's already a portion of it there, but it's nowhere near enough. I mean, I think that's a thirty-foot right of way through there, isn't it?
Be easier to put an exit ramp right behind Target, wouldn't it?
An exit ramp behind Target on eighty-one?
I think it, they wouldn't do it, they, it would have to be further down, it would have to be between Taylor Station and.
You know, there's gotta be a distance.
They would have, I was gonna say, there had to be another bridge put across. And it's, uh, it would probably end up down there someplace close to Proctor and Gamble, and that would, would be fulfilling to, mostly to them, because, you know, once.
You couldn't do an exit only? I mean, that, that would leave a lot of traffic trying to get out of there, they'd go out to the interstate versus.
Well, then they would have to come back out of, then on Taylor Station, you know, get back out on the interstate.
If it was exit only? I don't know, that would be, it's an idea. So they fought exit fourteen for years and saying they couldn't, it's too close to exit thirteen obviously, but I guess because of the hospital, they justified it because of hospital access, you know? I doubt they would justify it for something else other than that, maybe.
It would, I think that if it was only an exit only, it would, it would benefit one sole entity more than public entity, so I don't know that it would.
And, and the other reason we're bringing it up right now is, you, and Eddie will tell you, um, the, the activity in the planning commission, probably the past, what, two or three months, has, has really started to subside, subside and level out.
Has had the, the, the water district.
Right.
It's gone to zero with the water district.
So there's that, there's that year lag in property taxes from the time new property comes on the books until it runs through the tax rolls. There's that year lag, so this year, next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, your revenue, and I've done some preliminary revenue projections, your revenue projections look pretty, pretty good. Of course, you know, we're gonna see a decrease in the property transfer tax, because that's, that has an immediate effect when, when housing and real estate slows down, and we know that, that more and more houses are becoming available. But the property taxes that, that this council gets next fiscal year is, is already on the books. It's fiscal year twenty-four, year twenty-five, that you have to be concerned about. And, and one of the things I'm gonna tell you early on next Thursday is as you build this budget, don't build it in a lot of recurring expenses that you don't think you can sustain the, the year after, because next year, next year will look good, it's the year after that I, I'm concerned about.
So even if we stay budget neutral, it's still gonna be a concern?
If you stay, compared to this year, if you stay budget neutral, you're golden. But you've been doing this a long time.
It's never gonna be budget neutral.
Well, and, and I have, I have seen it in the past, and I'm starting to see it a little bit now. Anytime you have a new council, and we have a new council, the first budget requests sometimes are a little stronger than, you know, let's see what we can buy the new council. So you're good, you're, you're gonna see some requests, nothing that we can't, that we can't handle. So, yeah, if you stay budget neutral, you're golden. Um, I just pulled cash balances today, um, we've paid almost two million dollars out of the general fund for LED house, uh, lighting that we're gonna reimburse ourselves, and, and again, that's on the, on the agenda for next week. If we reimburse ourselves, if we, if we put that two million dollars back in our cash balances, we're exactly where we were at the end of December last year. And that's even with our increase in payroll and some of the supplemental funding that, that we've done. So your revenues are, are strong this year, our revenues will be strong next year. It's twenty-four, twenty-five that we need, as, as you're setting this year's budget, for example, you don't wanna add six firefighters this year unless we, we know we can sustain that.
Six times four.
Right, you're not gonna be able to add twenty-four at a time, you may have to phase them in.
At one at a time.
One at a time.
One station at a time?
Yes, sir.
Unless we get to one percent sales tax.
Well, you, you still don't wanna do that, I mean, just the pool of being able to find those folks. So it's, it's really truly better to do.
Enable one house at a time.
And pick the, pick the ones that are in the worst need.
Right.
And move forward that way.
The furthest out or from.
Just, well, the ones that are struggling the most, those, those where we need to go first.
Where they're not getting the ball.
Where the coal volume is and where the scratching silver is, that's where we would look at first.
And the other thing with, uh, when I started this conversation about the TIPS, you know, uh, you know, Greg Rowe, uh, who's the chairman of the Water District, had spoke about their needs, and their needs are, are pretty large. So you know, Greg had suggested, you know, that, that there would, this discussion was had about the TIPS, uh, years ago, and that, you know, he said, you know, maybe, maybe it could be brought back to the table. So we all know that we're gonna have infrastructure needs, and I think that if we don't try to find every opportunity to pay for those water and sewer lines, instead of going back to the public, I, I think we've not done our job. So there are several different tips, as Alan had said. I asked Anthony, uh, last week to brush off his law book when it comes to the TIPS, and I think he may have some additional to add.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an expert on TIPS, I've never, um, been involved with forming a TIP.
I've been in a few TIPS before.
Yeah, I've been in a few TIPS as well. I mean, depending on what the purpose of the TIP is. So Alan was talking about a sales tip, and I think if the idea is to expand more retail out there, you're taking the sales tax money that will be going to the state, keeping it here to pay for the, usually be a bond on that infrastructure of the water sewer roads, et cetera. But you have to get it approved by the state, the state's only approved a couple of those, Cabela's.
I think they don't even, four, three or four.
The Cabela's and.
Wheeling.
Wheeling, I think Morgantown where they've got the things just go crazy with the.
Baseball field on there.
Yeah, the baseball field and the, uh, what's the new, uh?
Bridge porch probably used as well, I would think.
Bridge porch, I don't think they have a sales tip, I think they're.
So, so if you get a sales tip, basically all the sales tax from that general area comes back to be used? The full amount of the sales tax, like a full six percent or five percent, six percent?
I think so, I'm not exactly sure, but you take the base, just like you do with the, a property tax tip. You take the base amount in that area, that's still taxed the same, so if it's property tax and you've got, ten million dollars of property there, it's still at the beginning, that's still taxed and goes out to the county, the Board of Education, et cetera. Goes up after you put the infrastructure in at fifty million dollars, the tax on that forty million dollars of property is, uh, is what goes towards the district. I think it's the same thing for sales tax, if there's ten million dollars in sales tax.
So if we need to, if we need to put that road in from exit twelve to exit eight, we get sales tax from Commons, basically?
That was my question.
So, no, the, the Commons.
The existing, the existing is not.
You'd have to talk with the development opposite to the state. The Commons already has a bunch of sales tax, so that's the, that wouldn't be included. That's already its base.
Even though the goal was to fix that area?
You, it would have to be off the new, or if there was increased business, increased sales happen, that area would include it.
So we'd have to bring new businesses along that road that you put down?
Yeah, I think it would have to be.
That's kind of what the, the concept is, it's kind of, build it and they will come. The, the thing that, with, like, yeah, I've done a little bit of reading, the things that you have to be concerned about, the sales tax tip, you're projecting what you think the sales tax, that, you're projecting what you think will be generated through the sales tax, and that's what you're paying for the bond. You're on the hook for the bond. If the economy tanks and suddenly you miss that mark, you're still on the hook for, for that bond payment, so.
And, and there's really not a lot of usable land along, I mean, it's empty, but it's owned by people, so you, you'd have to convince them to let more business come in there to even get any sales tax on that stretch of land, right?
Depending on how it's done, there's a bunch back in there. But, and the same issue with, um, real property TIPS, if you're not generating new revenue from increased property values, increased property taxes, then you're still on the hook, which I think is what Martinsburg's kind of gotten into.
Yeah, Martinsburg hasn't done well with their tip.
With their tip.
Now, they'll, they'll be the first event that has not panned out as they had expected.
Yeah.
They only have one, they only have one business, isn't it, back there, is it even closed shoes? Is that part of the tip?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's the only one that I know of, isn't it?
As far as I can tell, you could use it for also, yeah, building a new fire station out in the district, something like that, but of course, the more money you're spending, the more you're gonna have to. Be pretty certain that you're gonna be able to generate.
To handle that load.
The, the thing about it, a sales tip is it's just, it's not taking any other money away from, that would be going to the county, to the county. You'd still get all the tax revenue from the, the buildings and personal property.
Down Route forty-five, too.
Well, you have to have a plan together. I don't know if there's firms out here that help put the whole plan together, make all the projections. They're not just gonna say, hey, you can make your whole county TIP edition.
But you better have a good plan for it.
You got to have a plan.
And also between that exit twelve, the back of Target and Taylor Stations, any of that land along the highway there, farm land protection? If it is, is there a way to pull that out of it, if you know that's there?
Once it's handed in.
There's no development.
None of that through there.
Not even roads, no, nothing.
Okay, 'cause I thought somebody told me some of the land on that side of the highway today was farm land protection.
Gone further out.
H D and I were talking a little bit about farm land protection and how it works, and, and I explained to him that, you know, once it's in farm land protection, it's there forever, and that, in the past, they have not been as selective as maybe they could be as to what they put in farm land, and, and we do have a couple parcels along eighty-one, I'm not sure exactly where they are, that's in farm land. Well, once it's in farm land protection.
There's nothing going through.
You know, if you wanna put property, you know, in Back Creek, in farm land protection, and, and, and the example that I gave you yesterday is that seventy acres we just purchased, um, adjacent to Forehouse Farm, that, that probably would never have been developed because it's.
Lays low, wet.
Right, it's flood plain, it's rocky, no water. Right, that's, that would be perfect farm land preservation property. Uh, but some of this prime real estate, you know, and I know farm land has its place, farm land preservation has its place, but you can't make any more.
You know, that, that was, when all that was established, there was also an option to do, um, TDRs, which was transferable development rights, and that seems to work very well in Frederick County, from what I've been told.
Virginia or Maryland?
Uh, Virginia, so I don't know if you under, you know what TDRs are? Let's say I own a hundred acre tract outside of the city limits and out in the rural area, and somebody wants to do a development closer to the city of Martinsburg or the city of Winchester, and they don't have, this, this sustainable, I guess, ability because of the restrictions of the zoning that they have, they can come to me, in essence, in essence, buy my developing rights on my property. So if I have a hundred acres, then they say, okay, you get five acre tracts, so there's twenty of them, and if they wanna buy all twenty of my developable rights, then I take those twenty in town and develop it. Maybe because that property in town was already sold off, they sold their development rights. It's a way to renew the property's value, so whenever the development meets my property, then whoever wants to buy my property, then I've gotta go out and buy somebody else's development rights and bring it back to that property. Is that really confusing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't say, okay.
Could be.
Could be, but you know, I mean, but that's all worked out within the courts, within the deeds, within, and that was an option that I thought could have been pretty useful here, as long as it's explained in greater detail, I mean, but why, you know, they could take twenty development sites off of a hundred acres and only have twenty to bring back in on something that you could do more high density, I don't know how, that's the part I don't think, I, I understand that well.
At, at what point do we not need to protect more farms, is my question, and who makes that decision?
Well, it's the, one is the landowner, whether or not they wanna sell them.
Right, but I'm saying.
But that's what preserves that property.
I had a bill drafted years ago to try to get it where they could use the property transfer tax instead of buying easements for farm protection to buy public parkland instead, so the community could at least use the property. And it made a lot of sense to a lot of people, but we couldn't get it through, but, uh, I'd rather go out and say, you're gonna pay twice as much probably when you're buying the land instead of buying an easement. But still, I'd rather spend two million dollars on a hundred acres and have it for public use as a park, where still, it's not gonna be developed. I mean, it's the same, you're, you're, you're accomplishing the same goal, and, um, it's gonna.
So it would be, what you're thinking is, it's, it's not a farm land preservation, it's a, it's a.
It's public parkland.
Public parkland preservation.
You don't even have to, I mean, you could, a- and you don't have to restrict it to where it could never be sold if it's done through the county. Now, when you do a land and water grant, for instance, and buy a parkland, it's, the federal government requires it to be restricted, so you can never sell it, it's, it's there in perpetuity, you know? But it's, you know, you, you don't have to restrict it locally, like the, the seventy acres next to the forehouse, the county bought it outright, so there's no grant money involved, so at some point you could really sell that if you wanted to.
Well, with this discussion, I, I, I think it does warrant a, a workshop.
Workshop, yes, because whether it's the road or not, it might be some other project, and y'all probably, like I am, I, I can't explain the TIP and how it really works, so it'd be nice to know exactly how.
Pretty complex.
Yeah, I would think.
And, you know, there's not, not a lot of folks in the, in the state that, that are well versed in it, so we'll, we'll reach out, we'll get some, some dates, bring it back into the council, and then once we have a date established, then you can tell me who you want in right again.
I like that, it is doing it to help the Water District more than anybody.
Yeah, that's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a heavy lift, and like I say, the, if there are opportunities for us to find that additional funding, I really think we need to be able to take advantage of it. And, and not be narrow minded, I, I wanna put everything on the table, and what, what works will stay, what doesn't work, we'll take it off, but, you know, we may, in my view, we may be looking at more than one district to be able to do. You know, is there an opportunity to do the whole eighty-one corridor? I don't know, so let's find out.
I think the workshop would be the, the best solution to get the answers, because I think if there's multiple levels of a TIP in one district, you know, instead of one TIP to that spot, let's say there's a couple that would fit there, does that make sense, since the, I don't know?
Okay, set it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We need, we need executive session for litigation and county council personnel.
Mr. President, I'm ready to go in an executive session for litigation and county council personnel.
Okay, we are in executive session, and honorary councilperson, this is the part that we still behind closed doors a little bit, so we're, we're done, and I wanna thank you for coming in and.
Yes, ma'am.
Hope to see you.
Yeah, I got it.
Back in session after executive session.
Nothing, no action to take.
No action to be taken.
Sorry.
Back in session after executive session.
Nothing, no action to be taken?
No action to be taken. Mr. Barnhart?
If you want to have comments from the audience.
Any, any items from the public? You sure? There's no items from the public.
All right.
Need to retake any pictures.
Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity and I'd like to recess the meeting.
We are in recess.